Monday, June 3rd, 7:00 PM at the Waverly City Hall. Call the regular meeting of the Waverly City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Here. Kingas.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Rocky.
Here.
Chair.
Here.
And while Stein is absent.
While Stein is absent, yes. Welcome to all of you that are here as our guests this evening, and we'll get to whatever business you'd like to impart very shortly. But in the meantime, if you'd all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes for May 6, 2019, regular meeting.
You want to move the agenda first?
Oops. I check-marked the wrong thing. Approval of the agenda. Thank you, Brian.
I would like to move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any questions, comments? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Now we'll go to approve the minutes for the May 6, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Entertain a motion.
I approve the May 6, 2019, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes say yes.
Yes.
If no, minutes are approved. Our guest councilperson for the month of June was Sharon Cashman. And Sharon, as you well know, probably you can take part in all the discussions, ask questions of anyone you'd like to. The only thing you may not do is vote. But if you'd like to say a few words about you and your community involvement, I'd appreciate it.
For those who, those of you who don't know me, I have been on the Leisure Services Commission for about 20 years for the city of Waverly. I also had key involvement with the band shell being established in Coleman Park. And I'm also the pharmacy manager for Waverly Health Center, being there almost 30 years, and publicly announcing I'll be retiring in October.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on. Time for public comments for any item that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that has a concern that they'd just like to speak to us about?
Good evening, council and mayor. Are we able to talk about crashes at all?
No. This is not on the agenda.
Okay. I have two separate items. One is, we've got to get it together. I mean, good grief.
This is, what are you really referring to, Matt? This is public comments?
I know. That's, I'm, I'm in public and I'm commenting.
If this is concerning the Bremer Avenue situation, you're out of order.
It's not.
It starts out that way.
No, it didn't. I said our city needs to get it together. And then I have a back and forth, and this has been, this has been the problem.
Three minutes.
This is called communication.
Three minutes.
And, you know, we're trying to bring information, empirical data, and it gets shut, and it gets shut down. You know, and that's sad. I do want to say, and this is what I came to say, so ridiculous. I met with the mayor and James briefly, I think it was Tuesday, and we discussed some of the financial items. And the purpose is really for me to determine, you know, did the city receive funding for a road diet, and then all this nonsense about people getting paid off, and, you know, I didn't, I don't know where the money trail is on that, and that's, that's what I was seeking. But I, you know, I brought out some financials in public, and I wanted to clear those, and we discussed those with James, and, and I learned a lot of good things, and, you know, but basically, if I can explain that, so I can clear that up for the public. Essentially, DOT fronted the money, and we're paying them back for their portion. It's a DOT project, and the DOT needs to fix that. And if I've said anything incorrect, James, please correct me. But after I was reviewing the city financials, I found that we've got an excellent finance-minded city manager who's focused on getting the bond rating up, and so the city appreciates that, James, and keep up the, the good work there. But we do have a lot to be optimistic for. We have a great city, and we have a lot in front of us. We have a lot in front of us. I need to clear the air about some statistics that I put out there. Rape up 81%. It is a real statistic. Burglary, and I don't remember the exact numbers now. Larceny was 75%. Here's what's going on, and this is why we've got to get it together. Major cities, homeless camps, homelessness is just shooting through the roof. And you've got homeless camps, they're, they're putting them in middle-class neighborhoods. They're neighborhoods that are similar to the neighborhood that we live in. And it's a mess. It's a total disaster. I've had a good opportunity to be able to meet a lot of people that live in these neighborhoods. It's not a place that you want to, it's not a place you want to raise your family. It's horrible. They're dealing with rats, potential typhus spread, and as horrible as that is, it shows us what a great opportunity we have, but we've got to get it together. We have got to get it together. This is, this is a mess. And the, here's the good news in that. I have a friend that owns a chain of hair salons in Fargo. He is having, as we all are, with the labor market, is tight. 200 people on the labor market for the entire county, and that's just total natural churn. And every employer's feeling it's very, very difficult to get labor. He's having very, he's got a chain of hair salons, having a heck of a time getting stylists. And we know the perfect place for them. There are people that want to get out, housing market, houses are going on the market very rapidly. And it, you know, those statistics are real, and it's, and I'll be, I'd be glad to share more information on that, but what I'm saying is, there's businesses that are going to want to get out of that, and I know because I've talked to them. I think that, I think that they would, you know, feel right at home with little Los Angeles traffic. I don't think this would bother them one bit. And that's all I'd have to say. Honesty and empirical evidence is what we need, and hopefully you'll review that with the crash data. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say for an item that is not on the agenda? Moving on to consent calendar. Following items will be acted on by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests a specific item be considered separately. Pay request from Northway Corporation for the fire station geothermal well repairs for the amount of $14,431.36. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the water pollution control facility improvements for 2020 for the amount of $6,654.08. Pay request from VJ Engineering for the water main replacement 2019 for the amount of $925. Pay request from Stanley Consultants, Inc. for the Cedar River Parkway East improvements 2018 for the amount of $6,501. Pay request for Kramer &amp; Associates, Inc. for the Cedar River Parkway East improvements 2018 for the amount of $610,700. Pay request from Kramer &amp; Associates, Inc. for the Adams Parkway Bridge repairs 2019 for the amount of $121,957.39. A Class C beer permit for Quick Star #286. Cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits for Casey's General Stores 1649 and 3763. Fairway Stores, Inc. #561. IV, Quick Star 286, #707 and 752. The liquor and tobacco outlets. Prairie Links Golf and Event Center, Walgreens and Walmart. Entertain a motion.
I move the approval of the consent calendar.
Your second.
Second.
Item that would like to have a question about?
I just had a question about the first bill. I don't know if I need to pull it from the consent calendar. I just wondered what happened with the pump and the well.
Oh, the geothermal?
Yeah.
I believe it just had a failure.
Is that correct, chief?
And so it kind of became an emergency situation with the, the motor and the pump going down, and so we just had to get it repaired. I think with the amendment Jennifer prepared prior, the Public Safety Service Area should have enough funding to cover it, so we should be okay.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. So that's coming out of the firefighter's budget. Is that correct? Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the consent calendar say yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0, one absent. Next item is the review of the Waverly Utilities 2018 audit. Looks like we have some representatives from utilities here, so it's all yours.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and audience. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Casey Lewis, the Director of Finance at Waverly Utilities. Tonight I'd like to talk about our 2018 financial audit that was completed by Ida Bailey from Dubuque. I believe that you have all received a copy of our audit with the agenda today. For 2018, we received an unmodified opinion, which is the best you can receive, as well as no material weaknesses or internal control deficiencies. The first section of the 2018 financial statements for Waverly Utilities is the independent auditor's report. This section outlines the auditor's responsibility and their opinion as previously mentioned. The next section in the financial statement is the management's discussion and analysis. In this section, we provide a three-year comparison of the financials for Waverly Utilities, including discussions on budget versus actual, fund balances, capital assets, and debt activity. The following section is our actual financial statements. Our operating revenues for the electric utility were up $900,000 in 2018 compared to 2017, while expenses were up $940,000 in 2018 compared to 2017. A large driver of the increase in expenses was due to an accounting change related to the recording of energy efficiency rebates. In the past, we amortized this expense, and going forward will be expensing as incurred. This attributed to a $600,000 increase in conservation expenses in 2018. We ended the year with a reduction of $58,000 to our net position after the transfer of cash to the city of Waverly. In 2018, there was an increase in our cash balance of $3.3 million, with the majority of this coming from our $3 million bond for the electric utility. The fourth section of the financial statements is footnotes. These footnotes provide explanations of balance sheet-related items, including assets, debt, and pensions. The footnotes are followed by required supplemental information that is mainly related to pensions, as well as other supplemental information that provides trends of the utility. The final section of the financial statements is Ida Bailey's response to the government auditing standards. There were no instances of noncompliance or other issue matters that were required to be reported. According to Iowa Code 388.10, a municipal telecommunications utility must have separate books from the electric utility. We do keep separate books for the telecom and electric utility, as you will see throughout our financial statements. Our auditors found no issues with the allocation of expenses between the telecom and electric Due to the competitive environment surrounding the Waverly Communications Utility, we aren't able to share a lot of information tonight. We want to thank the community for their participation and support. We are currently at a 55% market share and adding new subscribers every month. As agents of the city, I encourage you to visit Waverly Utilities and discuss the Waverly Communications Utility 2018 financial statements with Darrell, Jeff, and I. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Casey. Any questions for Casey, Darrell? See, there's two, two other important people here from the utility, so.
I guess just a quick question. I know Kuna Mutual's put up a fairly large solar array. I know the utility's looking at it, putting up a community solar array. Do you see that continuing? Do you see that having an impact?
I'm going to let Darrell take that.
Good evening. Yeah, I understand that the Kuna Mutual array reduces their energy costs, or the energy that we buy. So they're offsetting that energy that we buy with the energy that they're producing. So there's really not a huge impact to our bottom line. They still pay a demand charge. They still pay for that distribution system to be there for them and pick up majority of their load. So very small impact. What we're trying to do with the community solar garden was, again, to replace energy that we're buying with our own energy. So if we can make that financially viable, we want to get that out there.
So that's still being looked at, or conditions change, or be something?
It is. And the state of Iowa came out with some, some grant money. We certainly threw out an application for that grant money to help bring that cost, that solar, community solar array down. Unfortunately, we didn't get any money awarded to us, but we continue to look at that. If solar panels continue to drop in price, we'll go back to that model and say, can we bring a community solar garden to Waverly? So it's still on our list.
Any other comments, questions?
Darrell, we have this relationship with the, I can't ever remember what MEAN stands for, and it's really not a very nice acronym, but how many more years do we have on that agreement? And my, my second question is, do you think they've become any more flexible in terms of what they're allowing a local utility like ours to do, for example, with things like renewable energy?
Yeah, that would be mean, Municipal Energy Agency of Nebraska. The contract is through 2041. And, you know, we did get them to relax their rules to give us 2%, which is about 1.9 megawatts of local renewable energy. So, yeah, there are some options to get some more renewable energy in there.
Anything else? Very good. Appreciate it, your time and the energy that went into this, and best of luck to you and your utility.
Thank you very much. Again, open invitation. Any councilmembers want to come up and chat with us about the utility, we're, we're happy to see you. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Moving on. Item number two, Resolution 19-90, a resolution directing sale of several million dollars in bonds. GO Bonds Series 2019. I would entertain a motion. We'll fill in the figure that.
I think we have to have the figure before we.
We can have the figure, okay.
Well, I'm assuming it's the number that's on the sheet here at the 3587?
It's actually 3,500. Yep.
Okay. So I can move approval of Resolution 1990, directing a sale of 3,500,000 general obligation bonds, Series 2019.
Your second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion, questions for?
I guess my only question is, do we have to have the exact amount of the final price on that, or is it 3.5 million?
3.5 million. The 87,000's additional premium, we will not have to pay back. And Maggie Berger and John Murphy with Spear Financial are here to kind of run us through the Moody's report and our bond rating, as well as the bonds we'll be issuing.
Why don't you do that, run us, run through the scenario, and then we'll see if there's some questions.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, mayor and council. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. I have my colleague, John Murphy, here with me as well. We were here at the city this morning from 10:30 to 11:00 to watch the bids come in on 3,500,000. And as you can see, we will be recommending that you accept the low interest rate of Country Club Bank of Prairie Village, Kansas, at 2.1100%. There is an original, and then there is a revised. Let me quickly just explain. Because you set a pre-levy during your budget period of what you would levy for this, we needed to adjust principal in the first year and the last year to hit that pre-levy amount. Interest rates were lower than we anticipated, so we moved a little bit of principal up, which is good for you, saves you some interest, and that's what brought that interest rate down to that revised amount of 2.1100. As James mentioned, the bank, Country Club Bank, is going to pay you $87,000 in a premium, and we'll get to the interest rates in just a moment. But what they're doing is they're anticipating, or hoping, that interest rates are a little higher than interest rates are today. So what they're doing is they're trying to sell these at a little bit of a higher yield for you, and that way that's going to bring you in some premium upfront. Again, you're just borrowing the 3,500,000. If you want to flip to page two of this packet, we have included the Moody's rating report, and again, the city has been and has maintained, you have been affirmed at the AA3 rating. This is a phenomenal rating for the city. You've been at this rating for, for a number of years. We had the pleasure of sitting on a conference call with James Brunner and Jennifer Mine, who did a fantastic job of representing the city, talking not only about demographics, the economic side of things for the city, but also financials, property tax information, all kinds of things go into that call. We have highlighted some of the items that Moody's will put into their report. We talk about the top of what your financial position is, that it's sound and supported by our growing tax base. We do, we always point out at the bottom, what are items that could lead to a downgrade? And this is our time to stand in front of you and tell you that it's material declines and financial reserves. So definitely when you're budgeting, when you're planning your CIP, and you're looking at using those financial reserves, any kind of decline, they're going to look at that and ask why. Moody's is going to ask the question, why are you declining those reserves? Because they, they hold highly that reserves are there for emergency-type situations that may arise in the city. It goes on to talk about how the city has experienced a growth in tax base over about 2.7% on average over the last five years. Talk about also the, not only is the tax base healthy, but also your general fund has posted surpluses over the last five years, bringing that fund balance to about 3.2 million, or 53% of revenues. That's a very good, strong number, and that's what helps you maintain and hold on to that AA3 rating. Talks also about that you have some exposure risk because you do own the Waverly Health Center, but that the city has not provided any financial support to the hospital for operations and does not plan to going forward. So they do point that out, that although there's some exposure risk there, that they seen that that's moderate to low at this point in time. They also go on to talk about how you are paying all of your long-term debt back. 100% of that debt is going to be retired within 10 years. That is also very good. I know that's something that this council has strived to do. And they also then talk about how your management is strong, and you've got a history of aligning revenues and expenditures and maintaining those healthy reserves. So you're doing a very good job at your budgeting, your CIP planning, et cetera. One thing that's new in this report is this Exhibit 2 on the next page. This is what's called your unadjusted scorecard. And what that really means is, they have a scorecard out there that they have to make public, and they tell everyone, this is where you would fall into these ranges if you have, you know, 3.2 million in fund balance. This is, this is the range. Is it the single A range, the double A range, the triple A range? And so, so they're putting you into a scorecard. Your unadjusted scorecard outcome is a double A3. So you are sitting very nicely, right where you should be. That means the committee that puts together the rating is not moving you in a downward fashion. They're not, at this time, also moving you in an upward fashion. But as you can see, you have a couple of areas that do get that triple A, and you have some areas that are in the single A. This is a global scale that Moody's is rating you on, and so this is a really good way and indicator to see maybe where you fall in some of the categories that they're looking at. Going on to the next couple of pages, we get back to something that has Spears letterhead at the top, and this is really the breakdown of the bids. So we said Country Club Bank was going to give you $87,000 in premium, and their interest rates are going to range from a 2.5 down to a 2.75. Over the life on the revised, you would pay in total interest 422,189. You had eight bids today, and we like to see that competition. It also should be noted that the Country Club Bank bid was in association with First National Bank, right here in Waverly, Iowa. We also like to see that. We like that local participation. That shows the strength and the belief that they have in you as the city. There are, the other seven bids are listed, but we just want to point out that the high bid from Raymond James, which is not a high bid at all, of 2.28%, you're going to, you would be paying more than $40,000 in additional interest. So that's why we like to see the competitive nature of the bidding, because we want to make sure that you're getting the best deal that's in the market today. The very last page of this proposal then, or this, this packet, is your final debt service schedule. So this is how it will be tonight, based on the action that you take. And you can see we have a call feature in there on 6/1 of 2025. That's when the bonds will be available to be called. If interest rates are lower than that at that time, you would have the opportunity to refinance. If interest rates are higher, we're going to recommend you just continue to pay the debt as is. That's probably going to be the case, looking at today's interest rates. But that also gives you the opportunity to call the bonds in and redeem them early. You could redeem them in part or in whole at that point in time. So with that, we'd answer any questions that you have, but we would recommend that you do the award this evening to Country Club Bank of Prairie Village, Kansas, at 2.1100%.
I'm going to ask a really basic question to show how little I know. If we're looking at a triple A compared to a single A, which is better?
A triple A. So yes.
Triple A is better than double A, better than a single A?
That's correct. So it's going to go, triple A is your highest in the land, then it's going to go a double A1, a double A2, and a double A3. So it goes just 1, 2, 3 down the category, then you get into the single A, and you have a single A1, a single A2, and a single A3. Once we drop below that single A, we get into what's considered non-investment grade.
So when we're looking at, for example, Cedar Falls, which is a double A1?
Correct.
And Waterloo is a double A2?
Right.
We're a double A3?
You're just slightly below them.
Just slightly below them, okay?
Just slightly below them. Cedar Falls is going to be right under, they're going to be one notch under what we would consider a triple A or a perfect credit. And again, part of that is going to be just due to size, and that's going to, really demographics lead that. We had that discussion a lot with cities that, you know, yes, you could be up in the triple A category in a lot of things, but sometimes it, it really is, is based on size and the value that you have that could grow versus the value in other cities.
As you can recall, that's been the one driving factor that kind of, I think we got downgraded a few years ago, but it was mainly because of size. It had nothing to do with our finances.
Right.
We're just, they reevaluated how they did the grading.
Correct.
And because of the size of our city.
Correct. You have some limitations on size growth, just because of the size.
We'll get that back, Tim. In a couple of years, we'll get that back.
I noticed a couple of places in here where there were some discussions on pension liabilities that seemed to be more of a, not a positive factor.
Right.
Could you maybe go a little bit into explaining what that's about?
Yeah. So unfortunately, in Iowa, you don't have a lot of control over pension liabilities because of the Ipers program. You're told exactly what you need to contribute for every employee, and Ipers is funded, and better funded, than most statewide government agency or employee benefits facilities. So really, from a pension standpoint, the way that we look at it, and the way everyone would fall in Iowa in the same category when it comes to Ipers, because again, you're told how much you have to contribute per public employee. The other side of the pension conversation is. The other side of the pension conversation is directly what you offer your employees. Do you offer health benefits at a discounted rate if they retire before age 65, before they can get to Medicare? Do you pay for those health benefits? It's things like that that really go into their discussion. You would see some negative connotations if you were offering benefits packages that seem to be out of the norm, out of the realm, were perfect packages for retirees. It would be things like that if you were underfunded, like some of our neighboring states in their pension liabilities. But right now, I-PERS seems to be one of the best functioning retirement programs in the nation, but I will remind you that I-PERS has reduced their investment projections. They were projecting 7.5% growth, and they have brought that number down. And actually, Moody's made a comment that they appreciate them bringing that investment number down, just because there has been some volatility in the market recently. That helps.
Yeah, so in other words, put this in, try to sum that up in something that I can understand. To a large extent, that is really outside of our control unless we were doing something specifically on our own that was kind of outside the pale of what most municipalities were doing.
That is correct.
Very correct.
And if you were not keeping up with your I-PERS payments, and you are keeping up with your I-PERS payments, we don't know of any city that is not at this point in time. So, you know, you have little to no control over that part. But because it is such a nationwide problem, it is going to be on the global scale, and they're going to talk to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
You mentioned that the Country Club Bank bid was made in conjunction with First National Bank of Waverly. Can you say something about what that means? What stake does First National Bank have in what we're?
Yeah, so we don't, we actually do not know. That's not a question that we ask, what stake, because it is a competitive bid. You can probably contact the bank directly and ask them that question, but what usually occurs in that situation is, these underwriters have had this proposal, this prospectus, this official statement, for about two weeks. Also, your local institutions knew you were going out to bid. You've had public hearings, you've approved that official statement, and so one of them may have gotten in touch with the other. Country Club Bank is what we call a bank for banks or a corresponding bank, and we find that between Country Club Bank, UMB Bank, and Bankers Bank, a lot of times, they are going to be the ones that are going to have local or financial institutions in your area. And the conversation may have been, it could be anywhere from, if we buy this deal, Country Club says to First National Bank, if we are the successful bidder on this deal, are you interested in taking part of this deal? And at what interest rate are you interested? Or they may go to First National Bank and say, if we buy this deal at this interest rate, would you like any of it? There definitely can be a back and forth that they've been having over the last few days. So all we know is that they participated on the bid today, and that likely, they will end up with some of this deal back in their portfolio for municipal debt. It's pretty common, we saw last year, State Bank was a part of the, or two years ago, I'm sorry, not last year, but two years ago, we saw that State Bank was a part of that winning bid as well. It was in association with.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much for your report, and your efforts to finalize this, what I would consider an absolute wonderful bid.
Fantastic.
Okay. A motion and second to approve Resolution 1990, correcting the sale of $3.5 million, $3,500,000 GO Bond Series 2019. Ro Kogel, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Sale of the bonds are approved, 6/01 absences. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of Bremer Avenue traffic concerns. James, if you would kick this off briefly with your little report?
Yes, sir. Staff and I talked with the DOT and their engineers this morning, WH Gas as well. They are finalizing the final timing of the lights up and down the Bremer Corridor. We kind of had some good discussions, some questions we needed answered on our end, and they hope to have that implemented possibly this week, most likely next week, depending on the final report that they're generating for us. So that'll be their next move, is to finalize the lighting scenario, and it was a good discussion this morning, and we hope to see it the next week or two.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Carla, I believe you indicated you had some communication?
I do have two written comments. The first was from Gary, or Reggie, Stafford and Mary Stafford. I literally just opened this, so. He says that the road diet is clearly not working, and he'd like to go back to four lanes, is kind of the summary, and I will have this in the office if you guys want to have the full thing. And then I also received an email from Sharon Cashman, talking about how the difference in speed levels, speed limits, can change the severity of an incident accident. Again, I'll have this, and I believe you all received a copy of this as well.
That we did, very good, thank you. Council discussion.
Just a little clarification here, James, that when you said that the DOT will be finalizing the timing this week or sometime early next week, does that mean that they will be retimed, or that they're just going to present a?
It'll be implemented, and the retiming will occur this week or next week.
Great, thank you.
Did they give you any hints about what they're planning?
Well, when you look at this, everything's done in sequence, so it's a matter of what percentage stays in the main corridor, or percentages of the side streets, and they will look at every single lighting scenario throughout the corridor. It's why it takes a little while for them to do this. Then they look at the amount of traffic counts, and they have some from prior to the bridge being closed, and obviously, we've seen what's happened when the one bridge, one of the two bridges went. And so they're getting that additional data to do the comparison, to see what other adjustments might need to be done. But as far as hints, they're hoping to extend a little bit on the Bremer Corridor, depending on where the heavier traffic lies, and then that'll come from the side streets as well. Because we discussed, should we just extend it? And once you get too far, it can really mess up a lot of the rest of it. So that's been the engineering, and they've been trying to get done and finished, based on the readings they took prior to the bridge going under. So they don't really have a specific split for each light consistently. It will depend on light by light, what that's going to look like, and the utilities will go and make the adjustments as needed.
And do you anticipate that they will change the timing depending on what time of day it is? Like for commuting?
I think they have certain categories throughout the day where timing scenarios exist, but it really will be a timing shift all across those. So, you know, it's not like a thermostat in your house. You can program certain hours at precise, but it's similar. It's a much broader zone they can do that in. But their hope is to just adjust the timing to try and help facilitate some of the movement to be a little better. And of course, in 25 days, when that bridge reopens, that will alleviate a lot of this pressure as well in that main corridor. So that is the pitch that we have.
Do you anticipate that will include the arrow, duration of the green arrows?
Everything is included.
Everything.
The one thing I don't think you can impact are the yellow signals that have to be a certain amount of time, but the red, the arrows, the greens, the side streets, everything will be retimed going forward.
So, James, when you're talking about retiming, should we assume that we're talking, for example, about likely longer green sequences on Bremer?
That's a secret, Mike.
That's a secret.
No, it'll be an adjustment, again, as I said, light to light, depending on what the need is. Your larger intersections may have a longer green, it'll be taken from the side streets green lights. So again, this will all be in sequence, they have to coordinate this throughout, and then there is some link to the south corridor, but that won't really be impacted. It's going to be truly the Bremer Corridor with the goal of trying to move traffic through a little better, and it is now.
So this is a dumb question, but it sounds like at each intersection, there's a specific allotted amount of time for that intersection. If you expand the east-west green light, you have to subtract from the north-south. Is that how it works?
I think that's a very simple way to put it, but accurately, yes. There is only a certain amount of time in that cycle. If you extend the one, just like a balloon, if you crush down here, it gets bigger here. You have to have only a certain number of seconds in that full cycle, so you rob from one to increase the other.
Now, when you have pedestrians crossing, that's going to change the timing of the lights as well. I mean, for example, if you have, you know, a longer east-west, and then a corresponding shorter north-south, if someone's crossing north-south, they're going to need more time to get across the road for the walk symbol. Is that then going to be, anytime you've got a pedestrian going north-south, you're going to have a decrease in the east-west traffic time?
Yeah, pedestrian activation trumps the cycle. So it interrupts the normal cycle to make sure that there's a minimum amount of time available for that pedestrian to cross. One thing that the DOT is committed to is, they're going to continue to work with the city to monitor the situation.
Correct.
And so we get into August, when the Cedar River Parkway is open, and we get back into the, you know, warpburgs back in session, the public schools back in session, you know, they're committed to continuing to look at this and to see if there are further adjustments that are justified.
I would imagine that there is, at this point, not a plan to change the lights back to their current timing after the Adams Parkway Bridge is reopened. I mean, the timing will stay as it's retimed unless there's some reason to change it again.
Correct. They're setting the timing as if the bridge is already repaired. So it will help initially a little bit, but it'll be a much bigger gain when the bridge itself is put back.
That's a very eloquent way of saying it. I'm assuming this just isn't a temporary thing.
No, it's not.
Permanent, as far as permanent things could be. And one other question, I know there have been some suggestions about turn signals, and I would, since it hasn't been mentioned, are they looking at turn signals downtown, or is that something that's not on the table?
At this point, we've not discussed that future investment in possible arrows, additional arrows, or turn signals. They're more concerned about the through traffic, as the turning traffic does not seem to be as much of a hindrance. So their turning traffic seems to be going through easier than the through traffic, and so that's been the focus, is the through traffic.
So I guess I have a question to clarify what Rod just asked. If they, since traffic seems to have increased with the bridge closure, when they retime them, are they going to time them to account for the higher volume of traffic for that next period of two weeks?
They took the initial readings prior to the bridge going into construction, and so that is the timing they're basing it on, because in a matter of, as I said, three and a half weeks, it'll go back to that. So any additional timing may help some, but again, the most substantial improvement will be when the bridge is opened again. So they're not timing it to account for that increased traffic. They are going to look at the new numbers with that increased traffic. But a lot of the issue we see is, if you use, say, 4th Street, a lot of that traffic was heading to the east anyway, say, in the evening, but it would have went up first instead of, you know, Cedar Lane is trying to now. So it still would register the same number at 4th. So it may not be able to be retimed using those increased numbers. We see more of a bottleneck here on the bridge, in this area downtown, as people try to get to Cedar Lane, you go north, et cetera. So it may not be as telling at some of the checkpoints they have as you would think, because the traffic would still have gone past there, and then it dissipates after that, which is where the problem lies. So they will time this with the figures prior to the bridge going into construction. They're going to review the current numbers that are taken and see how much difference it is, and there may be a slight adjustment, but their initial inclination was to put it as they have directed prior to the bridge going under construction. So I don't believe there's going to be a readjustment for the traffic current, they're looking more at when the bridge is open.
So how is that going to help us for the rest of June?
Again, the timing will extend possibly greens in areas that need it, pull from others, so it will help some. As I said, it's just the biggest impact will be when that bridge actually opens, though. Otherwise, you're timing it, and you're doing a secondary study to come back and time it two weeks later to redo it again, and I'm not sure if that's going to be as beneficial.
On the other hand, if we get the signals retimed, and it becomes clear that we still have a problem, DOT is still open to making another adjustment.
Absolutely.
Yep.
This is their first attempt, based on the figures they have, to retime it, and as Mike has stated, if it does not quite correct it, they think there's other adjustments that will. They will continue to work on that as other items open up, whether it's the bridge, the parkway, school's back in session, because school course this week will be out. We'll see what impact that has in the evening and morning rush. So all these things will play into this, and again, the timing is based on pre-bridge construction.
Have there been any thoughts to what impact the construction on Cedar Lane is going to have when Adams Parkway Bridge is open? Are we going to still see a lot of traffic, you know, back up Sun Bremer Avenue? I would assume it's going to have some impact.
I don't believe so. I think it'd be less than you think. Prior to the bridge going into construction, there's a significant amount of traffic from that area that took that bridge anyway, because it was a faster route to get to downtown than south versus going down the river and then trying to come through downtown. So the discussion we had is...
Basically, there would be people going east, and now they'll have to go to the Horton Blacktop, come into town over the Adams Parkway Bridge, and then head east on Bremer Avenue, whereas before, they would just come straight.
So it'll affect that one direction, and you just don't have the number of citizens in that area that you do, of course, crossing the entire Bremer Avenue area. So it will not be as substantial, again, if it becomes an issue. We'll try to address that once we see how bad it is, but I don't believe it's going to be that large an impact.
And in my understanding, the one lane of Cedar Lane will be open to accommodate those residents, or will it be for those residents only in the area that's affected?
It'll probably be the people living on that portion will have access somewhat, but it'll not be for the entire, through traffic. Through traffic, thank you.
All right, very good, thank you.
Will they be able to put a green arrow so that people heading south on 1st by Coleman can then turn left to go east on Bremer?
I don't think additional arrows have...
You know, when that's, rest of that traffic's being directed?
Additional arrows have not been discussed right now. Again, they're working on the through traffic on Bremer at this point.
And I did have a question today from somebody who emailed me about why the entire Adams Parkway Bridge is closed rather than just one lane, and it's my understanding that it's because the construction time would have doubled if you...
And the cost would have gone up, too.
And the cost would have gone up, so.
Yeah, we have discussed that numerous times, and there's information out there on there, but it would have doubled cost and time, and so that's why it was done the way it was. I know Mike did a nice job last time of showing the abutments that you're seeing tore out now that they're working on, and there simply was no efficient way to do that safely and tear out those end results by the bridge.
So, and Mike, is it fair to say that Adams Parkway Bridge is on schedule? Are we going to have it done where we hoped it would be?
At this point, it's, as far as we know, from the contractor, it's on schedule. The one thing that we have no control over is the weather. So they are working Saturdays. They worked last Saturday. I think their intent is to work the next couple Saturdays, because they are themselves committed to making, you know, a darn good effort to meet that June 28 timeline.
Just for everybody's benefit, beyond the light timing, there's been numerous discussions on other ways maybe to work through the detours, impact, flashing lights, four-way stops, all of those have been looked at to see if we can alleviate some of the bottlenecking that takes place during those peak hours. Again, my understanding is, there isn't a silver bullet, just because of the different intersections that folks coming to, having everybody do independent stops, and everyone could actually slow traffic down. So again, I just want to make sure we have investigated all those options.
Yes, sir. We've looked at multiple items, from having law enforcement present at the time, to flashing lights, to four-way stops, to anything to try and alleviate some of the congestion, and they actually, I believe, make things worse in the long run, because there becomes determinations of when do you do that? Is it for a two-hour stretch in the evening? Is it the morning? Because most people don't understand, as I said, it's not a thermostat you program from your house. These are manually timed by hand, it has to be into the box, changing it at each intersection, the manpower to do it, the timing it takes ahead of time to do it, and then to put it back, because you don't want four-way stops all day when there isn't a lot of traffic. So none of those options really do anything but possibly cause more of an issue. If there was a silver bullet, we'd have shot it by now. If there was a silver bullet, we'd have shot it by now. There just isn't. And so we are waiting for the DOT to come back with their adjustments for the timing. We'll see at that point what it looks like after that occurs and then with the bridge open. So again, it's, we're trying to patiently see what they can do for us to help alleviate some of this. We did a discussion with the bump outs and that it should be wrapped up soon, getting the brickwork finished. And so we're trying to move them along. But that's the best we know right now is the timing will be done the next week to two weeks.
I also had another person email me about whether, like they do in big cities where you can make a commuter lane down the middle, but our light system is not sophisticated enough to do that. And I don't know how you'd handle people trying to turn from the other direction.
Right.
Yeah.
I will open it up to the public for a total of 20 minutes between everyone to make comments. I will not allow comments that we've heard numerous times before, such as what's going on in Marvist to California or Brooklyn, New York, or quotes by a professor from Pepperdine University. If you have new information and concrete facts, we'll entertain those. Just round.
My name is Heather Beaufort, resident of Waverly for almost 40 years. A comment back in January on KWay Radio triggered something in me. It was kind of a, well, the comment was, "No one will be bringing the road diet to council for reconsideration." And it also said, "We, the council's city, will not be coherced by a group of advocates that think they know better." So these comments to me were, the context was very angry and I feel, and disappointing to me. And I want to thank you guys for actually letting us bring this exercise, our freedom of speech and bringing this back up to the council, even though it was said that you weren't going to reconsider bringing it up. So I thank you guys for bringing it back up. Appreciate that. So advocate, I'm just going to kind of define what an advocate is, is to speak in support of an idea. I, Heather Beaufort, am an advocate. I'm an advocate for citizens of Waverly who feel the council is not supporting them like they were voted in to do. I'm an advocate for safety. And I'm an advocate for at least three generations of citizens. These last three generations are considered generations of inquiry. This means we want to know reasons for what is being done, the whys, so to speak, and if it is for the good or if it is just because. So we want to know if we're doing something because it's good or if it's just because somebody said it was good. That's our inquiry. So we must not really just see numbers. We don't want to just see numbers. We don't want to see facts, numbers, numbers, numbers. We want to see some kind of compelling qualitative or observation as well when it comes to doing something or changes. So I'm asking you guys to remember this when you're seeking to win over a skeptical crowd. So the last three generations are pretty skeptical. We want to know why. So consider that. With that said, I like the concept of quality improvement, which I think is what we're trying to do here in Waverly, a lot of improvements. And quality improvement comes when we see new evidence, if new evidence exists, that something is better. So then we use a testing cycle called Plan, Do, Study, Act. Plan, we look into it, we make a plan, we educate, we share info. Then we do, we try it out. We study it while we try it out and see what happens. And then we act, which is adjusting accordingly. Now, with that concept, if there is safety issues or safety issues are at risk, we have to stop. We have to stop what that, what we're doing because there are safety issues and come up with a new plan or start over from the beginning. Many, including myself, of the citizens have qualitatively observed and quantitatively the numbers, have identified issues with the three lane on Bremmer, safety issues. As an advocate for my peers and for safety, I ask that this be stopped and reorganized. City and council did jump the gun on this one, in my opinion. So please start being advocates for the citizens like we voted you guys in to be advocates for us. And respectfully let go of egos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Matthew Snyder, Ward 5. You know, I think some of the, I came charging hard at council on this issue and had to keep looking at information and looking at more information. And council probably realizes when I started coming at them with a soft tone. And at that point, that's what I realized, that what council got is really, really bad information. I mean, bad information on this deal. And this is what the city of Waverly has to look into. We've got data and empirical evidence on Waverly, five-page study we just released. DOT reported crashes up 28.7% on Bremmer Avenue since road diet started. 1050 crash calls up 44% to Bremmer Avenue, Highway 3 this year. 98% of citizens feel Bremmer Avenue is less safe, and that's according to two separate polls, one of 100 random citizens. And then just today, I wanted to check that number because, you know, people are going to, so I threw another flash poll out there. And that also showed 98, and I, it was 300 and some in just a few hours that came on this. It was noted in a letter to Dave Little that went to James Bronner that the numbers on social media forums may differ from what the DOT is going to present. And that's why what we did is an exact matched comparison to what the DOT did. That way, we could see accurate comparison of exactly what is going on around here. The data doesn't match, and there might be good reasons for that. But if the data doesn't match, we need to find out why that is. It should also be noted that the crash numbers used in the feasibility study didn't match what they were supposed to be. They missed. So, and then pre-road diet numbers, they appear to be inflated in comparison to the DOT crash database. So we need to get to the bottom of that, you know, seriously. The inconsistencies with the crash data, this is nothing new. This goes back to 2016. If you watch August 27, 2016, Councilmember Dave Resnicek found that they were inflating the data on crashes. And we're making judgments off of that? Let's understand what the data says. So let's go back. DOT inflates crash data. They miss on the traffic study. They do all this goofy re-timing and craziness. Meanwhile, citizens are just upset at you guys over all of this. There's this, you guys are starting to blame us, but it's just go back to the data and let's learn this and let's talk about data in a free way that we can understand each other. And that, you know, if we can get to the data and the truth, that's where we want to be. So the complete study is on Keep Waverly Moving. We've looked at it every which way and crashes are up. In particular, you know, there's issues on the bridge. I will say, West Bremmer is awesome for crashes. There's no traffic there anymore. That's a problem. So, you know, I guess this is, well, I mean, it's disappointing when I look at the data. And then, you know, and then we've got crashes numbers being off again. No one believes they're down 40%. It's just ridiculous. Thank you. And I'm not mad at council, it's just, it's ridiculous.
Good evening, council. I'm Vicki Green. I've been here 47 years. I work in a security position. I do safety. I know how flow should go. I've helped move people in, we've moved people around. I support the police, I support the fire department or EMTs. Their security and safety is my primary. For them, anything. My question to you is, and I do this a lot with students, I need to know what you see that I'm not seeing, what it is that you believe is correct and I'm not seeing it that way. I see it as a difficult situation for you and for us. It's frustrating. It just is frustrating. I don't understand it. I think that's the biggest part. None of us understand why. If you had a system, there were, the traffic was flowing and it was moving and it was safe for police officers and firemen to get to wherever they needed to. And I always say, if it was your husband, your son, your wife who needed that, or my kids lost their house to fire last year, you want those people on site. So my question's to you, unless you can really let me see inside what it is that you believe that I'm missing, I want the roads to go back to where they are. Thank you.
No applause. You're out of order.
Don't use up our time on applause. I have not been able to hear much of what has been said. Dan McKenzie, I can't hear you talk into the microphone. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. And I have this in writing, so you don't have to listen too hard. I'm Patricia Coffey. I've only lived here 42 years. Thank you for all the work you do. It's challenging work and it takes a great deal of homework and studying and learning to do it. Thank you for being willing to step up and do that. I appreciate wanting to keep Waverly vibrant and growing. I want that too. I also see that timing of improvements is really important. I've read and listened, including the interview with Dean and Mike this morning on KWay. Here are my four points. I believe it would be cheaper to redo, even at the $100,000-plus number you gave this morning, Dean. It's a great number, you can always go higher, than to continue driving people crazy with unnecessary and mismatched lanes. The timing of this project could be much better, especially when Mike said this morning, we ask, will it be better or will it be worse? If you apply that, would the four lanes be better than the three lanes if we gave downtown a year to recover after the two years of serious work and necessary work that was done, I think replacing water and sewer lines? It was hard to get downtown to the businesses I like to use. Will it be better when school's out? Will it be better when Warburg's out? Will it be better when no one needs to get to work? Will it be better when there's never any more snow in Waverly? Those lights are really important because I don't think you all understand that snow covers paint. Strangers to Waverly can't follow those lines. They can't see them. Get more stoplights, do more stoplight work, do more timing, do more turn signal work. We can see those. Here's a statistic that I trust. I speak for myself. I have driven Bremmer Avenue from downtown up to 16th an average of twice a day for 42 years. Forty-two times 365 times two, that's 30,660 trips I have made up and down Bremmer. I have not seen an accident and I've not been in one except when I'd been here two weeks, I ran the red light on the west end of the bridge and side-swiped the chief of police. I don't know if you have to count that one twice. Wickham took me over to his patrol car and said, "A lot of people miss that light. You're really new in town, aren't you?" I said, "Yes." He said, "Try not to side-swipe the chief of police anymore." So maybe it's only 30,659 trips that I've made up and down Bremmer without seeing or being in an accident. And that doesn't count teaching my two sons to drive and having them go up and down Bremmer and not see and not be in an accident. That's my statistic. You can read the rest of my opinion if you want to. I made copies. And I thank you for your time and I thank you for what you're trying to do for Waverly. But put it back to four lanes.
My name is Michelle Chavez. I live at 408 Brown Lane. Regarding your open letter, lights' timing changes to increase green lights, stop signs instead of lights or moving lights causes cross-traffic issues. Longer waits make it even harder to turn right and/or next to impossible to turn left if during busy periods. This effectively punishes people for living in the second ward or visiting downtown. I'm sure it doesn't matter much if you're retired, but those of us with children and jobs don't have all day to wait in intersections with an F level of service. Again, also with the lights' timing changes, the council and DOT has had several months to change them. You couldn't change them before, even listened to us. Why should we trust you to get it right now? Police directing traffic, poor use of resources, that's what I think that is. This is Waverly, Iowa, not New York City where there's no way you can fix the congestion with millions of people. We can fix Bremmer by putting it back to four lanes, let our officers do their job. DOT reports crashes are down since going to three lanes, but this is not truly the case for Bremmer Avenue. Never heard of so many crashes on this road until the road diet. And I've been here for over four and a half years. It's interesting how an average can be used to support one's case when a downward trend in crashes pre-road diet, per the raw data, tells a totally different story. But normally, it isn't adults who change definitions of what does or doesn't count in a game of numbers. Once again, a trust issue with this council and the DOT. We as residents can't ignore what we've seen. Emergencies, vehicles trapped behind traffic jams with nowhere to go, volunteer firemen who cannot legally pass in their civilian vehicle with their blue flashing light is not giving them the right to pass, only a visual request to other drivers to please move over. We've had close calls already with people driving in the parking buffer and center lanes to get through. Center lanes almost having head-on crashes, leaving them the choice of remaining stuck in traffic or risking injury or death to pass in the center just to get to a call is disingenuous best. This was an issue even before the Adams Street Bridge was closed. So the comments about it being better after the bridge reopens or even during the Cedar Lane construction are blatantly false. Cedar Lane is the only access to the rest of Waverly for over 100 households. If we can't ignore it, the council and DOT cannot ignore it. DOT provided a model that showed two left-turn lanes at places such as 4th Avenue West or 4th Street West and Bremmer Avenue. Why are we using a model that's supposedly going to be in place by 2036, which is almost two decades from now? Why are we using models that assume that the parkway is open, the bypass for Highway 3, when it won't be open for at least another year or two? I mean, this is, it's just- I mean, this, this is, it's just ridiculous. The four options brought up by the council are ineffective and ignore the will of the residents of this city. We, the people, voted this road diet down just before this council was seated, and you brazenly brought it back up and did it anyway. Starting off, the cycle of ignorance of the issues and losing our trust. Enough with the prideful hubris and condescension towards residents who disagree with you, city council. You need to finally listen and act on what we've had to say for months. Prove to us that you can be trusted. We need our four lanes back, and we need a vote now. What say you, Waverly? Thank you.
That's really the end of the time allotment. Do you have some other information?
Let everybody speak. There's a whole pack room. Not the other people waiting outside.
You're out of line, Michelle.
You were on K-way all morning.
Don't speak, Dean.
Let the people speak.
Dean, I'll be quick. Zach Bishonur, 405 Ashbury. Hey, you know, we got to remember we're all residents of Waverly. I think this is all very simple. We took something that wasn't a problem, and we made it a problem. There was no problem prior to, 30 years I've been driving Bremer Avenue, and I can't recall being in a traffic jam. It's time for, and it's a hard decision up there, guys, because you all voted for it, and I get it. I've made bad decisions. I own businesses, and I screw up a lot. But it's time to swallow your pride and get this fixed. Because the way it is right now, it's stupid. It's unnecessary, and it's downright dangerous. So fix it.
That's the end of the public comments.
Let him speak.
I'll make it real short.
That's thought I've heard before. I'm sorry.
Fine.
We've been here later than this, talking about other stuff.
Let him speak.
You want me to leave? I'll leave, but let him speak, Dean. Give him a chance.
All right, Craig. One, one more spot.
Come on, Craig.
One more spot.
Maybe until 1:00 AM if it's necessary.
Now, I might make it long. I'm going to add a little light to it. All these people have been here 40 years. I've been here 65 years, and I love this town. I've always loved this town, except for the last few months. It's driving me crazy. Owned two businesses now in town. Had three. Had a restaurant, Dell's Diner. And when the road diet was put into effect of the three lanes, we had everyday occurrences of customers saying, "Man, it's hard to get around in this town." And we just agreed. We sold that. We don't have it anymore. But we still have two businesses in town located on the intersection of First Street Southwest. The DOT was kind enough to take away my main entrance to my business. I tried to speak to the DOT about that, and I got about as much as my iPad would receive as an email just basically telling me, "Too bad." That your customers can drive around the block and enter in your other driveway. With a clothing business, clothing business that we have there, sometimes you have people come to town that don't know you're there and see the sign and like to pull in, and if they can't pull in, they continue to keep going. And we've noticed a decline in our business because of that. We've also noticed people that come in or hear people come in and say, "It's very difficult to get here." One more thing I have to say is, one of the things that's been talked about with this road diet, which that title really bothers me. It should be road tragedy, is that the safety factor, and I can witness this, and this is long before the Park, or Adams Parkway Bridge was closed, is the intersection around 3:30, 4 o'clock, I was out working in front of my building. The intersection was so plugged up with traffic from both directions, and I heard the sirens. And the police officer had to stop his vehicle. He could not get through the intersection. And the cars finally had to pull over up on the curb to give him room to get through. It didn't take a long time, but in an emergency situation, seconds count, not minutes. I don't know what the alarm was for, but it doesn't really matter. So I just had to make a comment that I'm hoping you guys are listening. It's been in the past, it feels like what we're running here is not a democracy. It's like we're being told what to do. Hopefully, you guys can remember that we elected you people to do things for us, not to tell us what to do. Thank you.
Like it or not, and I'll be crucified for this by all of you, I have some comments to make. It's been consistently said that traffic accidents on Bremer Avenue are up. 47%, whatever the percent. No one will provide us with those exact numbers.
Got it right here.
The DOT's report that Matt referred to did a six-month post-construction, October 1st, or end of October through the end of April, 2019. There are 12 crashes in six months on Bremer Avenue from 20th Street West to 8th Street East. And that takes in 150 feet on either side of Bremer Avenue. In other words, 150 feet of each intersection, each direction. If you don't believe those, I received, picked up from Chief Purcell, accidents from January 1, 2019, through April 1 of 2019. Starts with 2014. Entire Bremer Avenue, private and public, 32 crashes. 20th Street West to 8th Street East, 24. 2015, the numbers are 29 and 19. 2016 is 16 and 10. 2017 is 16 and 8. 2018 was skipped. 2019, the entire city, 72. Entire Bremer Avenue, which would be from 20th Street, would be actually start clear out in Willow Lawn, and go to 39th Street East. Private and public, 26. 20th Street West to 8th Street East, only public. In other words, Bremer Avenue itself. Not one in Walgreens parking lot or Fairways Lot, 13. DOT actually has one less over a six-month period of time. So take those for what it's worth. It's not hearsay. Response times that have been talked about. Granted, Chief Purcell's staff may have experienced a slowdown, but in visiting with him and seeing some of the times firsthand, there's not been a problem with response times. In fact, I witnessed Saturday. Two cars went out. They had clear sailing from, from this intersection, First Street East to West, wherever they turned off. Not a problem. Sheriff Pickett says, "We don't have a problem."
But we do.
Heidi Solheim, from the hospital, has stated publicly, "The ambulance crew does not have a problem." I visited with Chief Hopple this morning. There's not been enough fire calls in the last six, seven months to get an accurate feel for what it is. He admits that some of his volunteers have had a little bit, had some problems. And that's because where they may be located, and how, I'm not saying not belittling the need for those volunteers at the fire station, but they also know sometimes, is it real urgent or is it not quite so urgent? Should not make it, it should not make a difference. There were some that wanted to be here tonight, but they drove into the parking lot and saw all of you people, and they actually were in support of the three lane. They actually were intimidated and didn't want to stop. That's sad. That's an email direct, that's, I'm sorry, but that's an email direct to me.
Put it down, hand it to us all. Give us a copy.
One more out first, and you will be removed. Who you got to listen to? Five people or 500? In the meantime, to get a feel for the business climate, I visited last Wednesday and Thursday 16 businesses on Bremer Avenue. As far as the three lane and four lane, Chief Faur would prefer a four lane. Only one was really vocal about it. One was very adamant that it remain the three lane. Most of them say, "Three or four lane, it doesn't matter. We're a destination business." Overall, business climate's healthy. There's a little bit of frustration. One's struggling. One's still down from, a little bit from pre-construction. To a T, they also recognize that the weather has played a big part in the shopping. Several mentioned lack of the theater has affected their business. I will tell you, and there's a gentleman here that can verify it if the need arises. There was a business that was targeted a week ago Saturday. Someone went in on a pretext of shopping. Never did shop. Started asking questions about who'd been in the store, the mayor, the council, some of the city staff. "How's your business? Must be going down," et cetera, et cetera. Within hours after that visit, a post was made on Facebook that said, "Give some of the answers, along with some other information." The person that made that post was not even in the store. Tell me how he got the information. Plus the fact that what was posted on Facebook was taken out of context. That's firsthand information. Is that what you want your group to be doing?
I have no idea what you're referring to. We just want to be able to choose a way to handle it.
Major concerns, major concerns are the Green Bridge, which this council has addressed. And Bremer Avenue Bridge will be reconstructed in 2023 if the DOT adheres to their current schedule. The bottom line invariably, from every merchant that I heard, talked to, is we have got to combat the negativity that's dividing this community.
And change it back.
And I'm going to tell you, you would find, and I'm going to tell you.
The answer's got their thumb on you guys, or what?
And I'm going to reiterate.
Dig into the data.
I'm going to reiterate, and you've all been told this before. In fact, Mr. Snyder was told last Tuesday, we go tomorrow, when it was asked about a vote by this council. Until a year has passed, unless someone from this council that voted yes to convert the traffic from four lane to three lane, unless one of these council people that voted yes bring it and ask to have it put on the agenda, it will not be on the agenda. Even if it was voted on tonight, the possibilities or probabilities of making a change and restriping, et cetera, et cetera, is weeks away. That's all I have to say.
Let's have some courage.
I have courage. I have courage, and if, if we find out we've made a mistake, I will be, I will be the first one to stand up and admit it.
Perfect. I'm not a group of citizens. And you're not listening to citizens.
We're moving on the agenda.
Ridiculous.
I'll give you all a chance to, to, to leave. I'll leave.
Well, waste of time.
Dean, I've got that council person that opened it up, so. Someone's already told me to open it up. Thank you.
I will readily go on the record and say, "I stand by my vote that I made before. I think it was the correct vote." I may prove to be wrong after we open up the Cedar Parkway Bridge and find out, but at this point, I still believe it was the correct decision.
Did anybody state for that?
I don't want to speak.
Okay, moving on. Hopefully, a happier note. Item number, item number four, Resolution 1993, a resolution approving the implementation of a facade grant program for downtown Waverly. Entertained a motion.
I will, I will move approval of Resolution 19-93, approving the implementation of a facade grant program for the total cost of $75,000 for downtown Waverly.
Second motion made, said, "Council discussion."
I had just one question on this. Is that, is there a limit or a maximum that any one storefront would be able to receive as a grant? Or if there was one storefront that had a really good purpose, could they get the whole $75,000?
I think the discussion that we've had with our group is that we want to spread it around as much as possible. We'd like to see how many applications we get and what those dollar amounts are. And we're going to do our best job to fairly distribute as much as we can to help with this grant, or to give some help with this grant. It is a facade program, but it was meant to be an impactful program for this year, which means we wouldn't want it just to benefit one business or one, one building. We'd really like to see a number of them who can make some changes and some improvements. So it just depends on how many applications we have and how to go through those applications.
There was a business that wanted that sizable of a facade change. We'd go for a different grant. Well, we'd go for a different grant for that specific business, like we do with the theater. I believe more correct. We go for that one business and not then jeopardize everybody else's chances of small improvements.
And we are looking at a larger-type grant program, which would be multiple buildings that you package together, which adds bigger dollars. And that would be something that we could do, four, five, six, maybe. That would be a substantial program that we could work with. Now, that takes a lot more investment on the city's part, because the city has to pick up, I believe, 30% of the cost of a larger grant. So if we were to do a half-million-dollar investment in downtown, we'd have to budget for that kind of thing. But, but we're just looking at that. We're having a discussion to see how many potential buildings there could be that would be for a major-type facade grant.
And just to clarify, this is a matching grant. The businesses would be putting up that much money, and we'd be matching whenever they put it.
Right. It's a reimbursement, too. It's after the work is done, and they've already paid the bill. We've committed to reimburse them for the amount that they were granting. The other thing is, the committee that's put together to go through the applications and try to bring those to the council. and try to bring those to the council will do that. So the council does have the ultimate decision-making. Since it's spending city money, we wanted to make sure that, that what happens is the council does make that decision.
Well, I'm certainly not one for wanting to throw around tax dollars money, but my first reaction was 75,000 might not be very much, maybe not enough for what we really want to do here.
Which is why we, we really talked about some things like awnings, canopies, some paint, some, some facelifts, as opposed to the larger type of project, which might mean taking off all the materials, re-tuck planning, do new windows. Those kinds of things are a major project, which we're not going to be able to fund as much, those kind of projects. So if we can get four, five, six, maybe more, that would do a nice dash of color, new, new awnings, especially on the north side where they lost some of those awnings. I know several of those are actually going to apply for the grant. We've got the application out now to people, we're starting to put it out to people. We're going to take applications into July and then make a decision. We don't want to wait too long to get them time to do it this summer. So we're hopeful to get that started.
Again, Chambers had a similar program, I mean, much smaller dollar amount, but they've been real successful in lower dollar projects and making impactful impact.
Sure.
I think 75 is certainly a good place to start and like you say, if we can get two or three businesses that want to do something together so that it even is more impactful.
Sure. And if we, if we find that we have four, five or six that are left out because we don't have enough money, we'll come back again next year and ask you for more.
We could put this figure in the budget.
It is in the budget. The 75 is in the budget. So we, we have to do, just like the IEDA does sometime and say, you didn't get it this year, but apply next year because you'll be on the first, first of list.
Well, maybe, maybe Travis has some wisdom on, wisdom on this, but I'm just not imagining why any business wouldn't want to take advantage.
We have a lot of expressing interest, so I think you, I agree with you.
Roll call vote, please.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes. Resolution 19-93 approving the facade grant implementation carried 601 absent. Resolution 19-94, resolution approving the Federal Aviation Administration application for federal assistance SF-424 for the Waverly Municipal Airport's runway 29 extension 2018 project. Entertained a motion.
I would move approval of Resolution 1994 approving a Federal Aviation Administration application for federal assistance SF-424 for the Waverly Municipal Airport's runway 29 extension 2018 project.
Second motion made, second. Council discussion.
Well, my only comment is on the report. I'm going to kind of take issue with how Mike Cherry wrote this up. He says alternative NA. Now, I think there is an alternative, it's just the alternative's a horribly bad idea and will result in us paying for the entire runway extension ourselves. But to just say NA, I mean, you really have to say what the alternative is, even if it is a horribly bad idea.
It did say horribly bad alternative and I didn't take it out, so.
I just kind of wish that when the alternative, when you say NA, it just, it rubs me the wrong way in saying like we don't have any alternative, as we could do it, it'd just be a really bad idea.
Let me explain the way I, I approach putting these agenda memos together. We already approved or we already awarded the contract. Once that is done, it's nothing but horribly bad idea. Because as long as they contractually follow through with providing the bonds and stuff for us to, to back out, we may owe them liquidated damages. So I leave it up to you to suggest alternative at this point.
That's kind of like, when I see that NA and the alternative, I do kind of wish it was spelled out, not only that we would actually be turning it down, just how horribly bad it would be to do, to not do this. So I, I always feel like, you know, as council play, we should always have the vote, the ability to say yes or no on any vote.
And you do.
Yeah. So, but I, I do like when the alternative's actually spelled out how bad an idea it would be to vote no.
Just thought that might influence it too much by putting it was a horrible alternative. Trying to save you though.
I, I think Mike Cherry can be more eloquent than I.
Not, not to belabor the point, but I kind of agree with Brian on, on some of these of the memos. I would like to have maybe a little bit clearer discussion of what the positives and negatives are on the vote and not anything specific for Mike, but sometimes the summaries are a little bit less than exact on what the advantages and disadvantages actually are.
If you could provide me feedback as to what types of things you may be looking for, that would be of help. Please forward those to me and we will do our best to incorporate that.
All right. It's a deal.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Cangis.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes. Resolution 19-94 approving federal aviation application for runway expansion is approved 601 absent. Resolution 19-95, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from JB Holland for the Waverly Municipal Airport's runway 29 extension 2018 project and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Entertained a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 1995 as read by the mayor, but adding the reference to DeCora, Iowa.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Resolution 1995 approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance for JB Holland for the airport is approved 601 absent. Resolution 19-96, a resolution approving construction materials testing CMT quote for construction testing services at the Waverly Municipal Airport for the runway 29 extension project. Entertained a motion.
I move approval of Resolution 19-96 approving construction materials testing CMT quote for construction testing services at the Waverly Municipal Airport for the runway 29 extension project for the estimated material testing services fee of $11,991.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Raffi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 1996 approving testing services for the airport expansion approved 601 absent. Resolution 19-97, a resolution approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for the infrastructure modeling, water distribution system and sanitary sewer collection system 2020 project. Entertained a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-97 approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Mason City, Iowa for the infrastructure modeling, water distribution system and sanitary sewer collection system 2020 project for the not to exceed fee of $71,900.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
I guess I would just like to know what, what action will result from this, this study? Does this actually lead us to do something or is this just something we have to do every few years like, like a bridge study?
Well, it is, I guess I'd say it is optional, but I would strongly encourage every community to do this periodically and it's been about 10 years since the last time we've updated our water distribution model and we held off because of the Bremer Avenue work. We wanted to make sure that that project was complete before we, we start looking at updating the model. This provides very valuable information as far as the strengths and weaknesses within your system. So it, it does address weaknesses, but also address where, you know, you have some strengths and some good things. I, I did, I didn't put NA under the.
I was actually going to comment, but I appreciated the fact that there was something listed as the alternative.
We, we do feel going forward that this is very important on, on the water distribution side. Areas of concern are the groundwater nitrate levels have been trending up for the past 10 years. And part of what we are going to be addressing is what is our action plan if eventually they start to creep over the maximum allowable level by the feds and Iowa DNR? So again, it provides that written document, provides that plan of action. The DNR is already starting to ask, given, given the way your nitrates are trending, do you have an action plan? And, and we're like, yes, we do, but we're also in the process of updating our distribution model and in written form, we will address that. And we will, you'll get to see that document in about six months.
So, so does this, does this study actually recommend a plan of action or is this just identify areas that we need to have, be concerned about and, and take a look at doing something?
Yes and yes. So the last document, what 10 years ago, we weren't faced with like the nitrate issue or concern that we are at today. So the, the document from 10 years ago identified weaknesses within our system and as well strengths, but as far as the weaknesses, identified kind of our top five priority projects. And fortunately, those were really opportunity projects that as we, we have an opportunity to, to do it within our project, and the example I'll give is 20th Street Northwest. As part of that project, we are looping the water main because Eisenhower Village, their water service came from Jade Stone, which came from Hickory Heights. And so it was getting strung out on this dead end water main. And so this was an opportunity to loop it back and connect it with the water system near Bartles. So that was one of the projects identified. And so we were able to schedule and coordinate it with the timing of another project. We also talk about the fluoridation of our water and we were, we were discussing our wellhouses. One of the things that we want to take a look at this time is evaluating our wellhouses and where we, we do our fluoridation and disinfection of the water to make sure that we're in compliance with the, the DNR building requirements for those facilities. On the sanitary sewer collection side, we have specific concerns that we want them to, to really kind of focus in on this time regarding the East Gate lift station and the Sixth Avenue Northwest lift station, that we are, are at the point where we, we really need to start addressing inflow and infiltration of surface water and groundwater into the system because they're, they're creating more and more. Every year, our, our issues seem to be getting worse. And yet, these are also areas where we're continuing to add population. So we have some specific targeted things that are of concern to us in addition to kind of the general report that will be developed. Additionally, we have an aging system. We're also, we've been doing a lot of manhole rehab as, as you've seen, shown here, but now we want to also start looking at incorporating some sewer lining. So it's a cast in place pipeliner that helps with that infiltration of groundwater as well as helps kind of structurally make the pipe more stable as well. So those are other things that we're now starting to look at, pull into our, our maintenance operations.
So this sounds like a pretty important study.
They are. They're very important. They'll, they'll kind of map out, again, our strengths and weaknesses for things that we can start to focus in on for the next five years. And the intent is to have a pre-final report available for us as we go into our budget, budget preparation time, this November or December.
Thank you.
One of the special engineering services is looking at the rate structure. Is that going to be just to see if the current rate structure covers our cost or that's not part of this study?
Was that checked? Did you say that box checked?
Section C under exhibit A.
Those, um, that's. Special engineering services shall be performed when authorized by the client for additional fees. So they're not part of this. If, if we get to that, that point, then, you know, that is something that, a service that they offer.
Again, I think staff has done a good job of projecting costs with some of the big projects coming up, that type of thing. But as you look at other communities, they're doing tap fees versus free lookups like we're doing, those type of things. So at some point, we may want to take a step back and just look at the overall fee structure, how we work with new subdivisions, those type of things.
Absolutely.
Other council comments, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Cher.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Resolution 19-97 approving professional service agreement for water and sewer systems
carried 601 absent. Resolution 19-98, a resolution approving the professional services agreement with Snyder and Associates for design services for the 10th Street Southwest Improvements 2020 project from West Bremer Avenue to Second Avenue Southwest. And this would involve water and sewer system. Entertained a motion, please.
I will move approval of Resolution 1998 approving the professional services agreement with Schneider and Associates of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for design services for the 10th Street Southwest Improvements 2020 project from West Bremer Avenue to Second Avenue Southwest for the not to exceed fee of $66,800.
Second. Motion made, second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Resolution 19-98 approving professional services agreement for design services 10th Street Southwest Improvements carried 601 absent. Resolution 19-99, resolution approving the two quotes to clean and inspect the exterior of the north and east water towers for Midwest mobile washers. Entertained a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 1999 approving the two quotes to clean and inspect the exterior of north and east water towers for Midwest mobile washers at Morrison, Illinois for the total quoted price of $12,580.
Second.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
Just a point of clarification on the source of funds, that the, the additional funds, the over the amount that was budgeted, now I guess I'm probably not saying this right, but the extra $4,580, is that from, where's that coming from?
Basically cash reserves within the water fund.
Okay. So it's just basically that was not budgeted, but it's.
We didn't budget a sufficient amount to do both. We, we had an $8,000 budget.
Okay.
We could certainly do one, postpone the other one till next year, but it's been seven years since they were painted and.
No, I don't want to do that. I guess I was just wondering, I mean, do we have to amend the budget or some kind of procedure like that or is our vote tonight sufficient to authorize that excess?
It's sufficient, with that being enterprise fund driven by fees, we have enough in there from the amendment that was done to cover that small amount. To have them mobilize again, we thought would be more inefficient because it's probably going to be closer to 8,000 again. So we're getting that, that reduced second rate by having them just do it all at once. So it was considered waiting, but, but we do have enough in that water budget to cover.
Okay.
It's like a buy one, get one half off or something?
You can certainly phrase it that way. Make that known, Mike, 40% off.
It's quite the process because they bring in like a 130 foot lift with a power washer on top, so, but it's a, it's a huge difference when it's done, so.
So there's going to be a video of that available?
You know, I think we might send the drone up.
Send the drone.
I want to appreciate the alternative that was listed here. I want to, to appreciate the alternative that was listed here.
Well, I didn't notice, uh, maybe I missed it in the, uh, supporting documents, but was there more than one bid for this project?
No, we did not. Uh, this is a, a firm that, that we've worked with. They do the, um, interior cleaning as well. So there, there is some value in sticking with, uh, a company that is familiar with your tanks and operations.
So is, are we safe in saying that this is a reasonable amount for the work they're going to do?
Yeah, these are twelve thousand, I mean, twelve thousand's twelve thousand, but it's not a huge, huge amount.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution nineteen dash ninety-nine approving quotes to clean and inspect the exterior of the north and east water towers is carried six zero one absent. Resolution nineteen dash one hundred, a resolution approving the purchase of iCompass software for agenda management. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution nineteen dash one hundred approving the purchase of iCompass software for agenda management from Diligent Corporation of New York, New York, to replace the current agenda manager and Google Mini for the sum of twelve thousand six hundred dollars. Parentheses, a fifteen hundred dollar setup and implementation fee will be waived, and parentheses, plus an annual fee of twelve thousand six hundred dollars for support and software updates.
Second.
Motion made second. Council discussion.
Well, I have to assume with a name like Diligent, they're going to do, give us good product.
The incompetent company we didn't look at.
Right.
Bad choice of name on that one. Do you want to run through briefly, Carlo, what this will do for us?
Sure. Um, actually, I kind of changed my mind since budget. Um, I had Civic Plus in mind at budget time and I actually went back through and, and had another demonstration on them and, well, Valerie sat in on them as well. And we got done and we looked at each other and we're like, kind of like iCompass better. Um, there are some features of it that are actually pretty neat. Um, so I've checked with our television crew, our cable casting, and they're, they think that this is all going to work really well together. But for instance, you can watch on a split screen and you can click on any part of your agenda and then your stream, your video will show up at that point, too.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, so there's a lot of features on it and really for the price, it will, they were about comparable, so we just felt like, and, I mean, the electronic votes are all a little more simple and just different things about it were really impressive. So it's a three-year contract, we'll see after that, but.
We still have access to past agendas?
Yes.
Okay.
We will. Um, but they assured me of that. Being a city clerk, I get kind of weak in the stomach when I think of losing all that information. So, um, anyway, I would fully recommend going with the iCompass. Uh, it would save a few thousand dollars if we went with Civic Plus. And I again checked with the city clerks in various places around the state. It's a mix, quite a few of them do use the Civic Plus, um, but a lot of them use the iCompass, too, so.
This is primarily brought about because our current agenda management is no longer going to be supported or available?
It's that wicked, um, Google Mini that is really obsolete and has been for years. Um, and that, that is what helps us search things and, and, uh, helps OCR the documents. And I don't know if you're familiar with it, but OCR is when the little dots on your letters form a letter and so forth. That's called OCR, so it can read your documents.
Very good.
Yeah. This will do it.
I think the current Mini we had, we had to find used on the internet because they don't make them anymore, so it was not, that was just to limp that together and keep it going, so we needed to be looking at switching this out.
Any other council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Cengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Resolution nineteen dash one hundred approving the purchase of new software for agenda management approved six zero one absent. Resolution nineteen dash one oh one approving the sale of a two thousand Ford, two thousand and four Ford F-550 four by four bucket truck. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution nineteen dash one zero one approving the sale of the two thousand Ford, four, two thousand four Ford F-550 four by four bucket truck to Eric Hoy, EH Electric of Ionia, Iowa for twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
Motion said. Motion made second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cengus.
Yes.
Resolution nineteen dash one oh one approving the sale of two thousand and four bucket truck is approved six zero one absent. Brings us to reports from boards and commissions. Library Board of Trustee minutes from April ninth, two thousand and nineteen, received into record. Bremer Waverly Law Board minutes of May thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, received into record. Staff comments?
I don't think we have anything tonight, sir.
Very good. Council comments?
Just a question. Uh, as I drive around once in a while with the hard winter, there's a lot of frost oil, seal coat breakup, those type of things. Have we done an inventory? Do we have a plan on how to address some of those?
Yep, we've got some larger areas. Um, I think out in the Willow Lawn area, maybe on, is it, maybe First Avenue Northwest? And so some of these larger areas, um, we're looking at incorporating them into our seal coat program because as part of that contract, we have work on several city park parking lots that involve doing similar type of work where you, you regrade it, inject oil into the sub base and then do your seal coat over the top of it. So, um, yes, we are, we are looking at it. We're, we're looking at large areas, small areas, and we may be back, uh, talking about incorporating it and as a change order to the seal coat contract.
Thank you.
I would like to remind our citizens that even though fireworks were went on sale, I believe on June first, that you are not actually supposed to light them off in Cindy Waverly until June twenty-fifth. Um, I think I heard a few this Saturday already, so please, uh, wait and use your fireworks legally. Um, and I'd also like to invite anyone who wants to join me for a beer after, uh, this council to discuss, uh, current events. I'll be at the poorhouse.
Very good. Any other council comments? I have just a couple, uh, in regards to frost boils, et cetera. Mike, the problem at Fourth Street and First Avenue Northeast, there's a barricade setting over, is that a manhole or just a boil?
My understanding is that that's more like frost boil and they, they should be, you'll see them starting to core these areas out and prep them for, uh, patching. The, the patching company is supposed to be in this week, um, in between rain events, so, uh, we are starting our spring asphalt utility patching, which will also address some of these frost boils.
Very good, thank you. A couple other comments, as I wandered Bremer Avenue last week, some of the pedestrian crossing buttons are not working. Don't remember for sure which one it is, but.
When you find out, email us and we will work with Waverly Utilities to get those checked out.
Like one of them was.
So when you say it doesn't work, you mean it doesn't beep at you or the light, because I know that the one at the southeast corner of Bremer and Second, the light goes on, but there's no sound activation, so. Yeah, you're, you're right that they're not all operating.
Yeah, they're not all, yeah. So it may be just that, probably utilities just should go check them all.
But, but contact, contact our office if you know specific locations, that is very helpful and make it more efficient. And we'll, we'll take care of work in Waverly Utilities.
Very good. There are, there were some concerns among the merchants about some of the things that we need to sit down with the DOT and address, but for the most part, it was a very, very good seven, six, seven, eight hours spent talking to the merchants. The response I got was totally unexpected based on some things that I'd seen and heard, so. With that, entertain a motion to move into executive session to discuss items purchased or sale of particular real estate.
I will move that we enter executive session.
Second.
Motion made second.
State the actual.
So, I was just reading to enter executive, it's right, okay. So I move to enter executive session to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure would be reasonably expected to increase the price. Governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price, the governmental property would receive for that property. Second.